The Pembroke School Committee meeting for Tuesday, August 5th, 2025. This meeting is being recorded. If you have any questions, you can send them to scinfo@pembrokek12.org. Would you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Public comments, I don't believe we have any. Acknowledge your visitors. I don't believe we have any. Well, Mr. Lee will introduce you shortly. Any adjustments to the agenda? I don't believe so.
No.
Any communications?
There's a couple of things, but I think I'm going to hit on some of them during the subcommittee updates.
Okay.
Oh, Katrina has one.
Yeah, just that there's the Pembroke Arts Festival this weekend, as well as Pembroke Community Day. So you can check out, I think, the Recreation Department. And the Chamber of Commerce has the dates and information posted.
That's fantastic. Thank you very much. Is the Community Day, is that the Swim Festival? Is that the same thing? Or is that something different?
There's the, the what festival?
The Swim Festival. I think they do the little Pembroke Swim Festival, which I think is also Saturday at the Town Landing.
Okay, got it. It might be ones at the rec, at the community center and ones at the town landing, but...
Well, sounds good. The bills are being circulated. I believe they've already been signed. Consideration for approval of school committee meeting minutes of July 8th. I will take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Well, Allison to my right will say first, Katrina to my right, Katrina Delaney, I'm sorry, with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Natalie, it's unanimous. Yay, my favorite part of the meeting. We jump into Mr. Lee's strategic plan?
Yes, so we are joined this evening by Ed Lee. He works for Teaching Learning Alliance. And we had talked at our last meeting about having somebody come out and just kind of give an overview of the strategic plan process, kind of the steps, the timelines, or potential timelines, some of the places where information is gathered and possibly and hopefully answer any questions that you guys might have about the process as we start to kind of ramp it up as we're getting into the school year, so.
Great. Well, good evening, and thank you for inviting me. So I have a short presentation for you about strategic planning. And strategic plan is really, well, again, my name is Ed Lee. I work for an organization called Teaching Learning Alliance, a small nonprofit out of Woburn. But like everybody else, we're moving back into almost home offices and we're leaving that Woburn location, so I guess we'll be...
Saves on the commute from Hanover, so that's...
My name is Ed Lee. I am a retired educator. I think I've had the pleasure of meeting some of the people here, you know. So I did urban work in Boston Public Schools where I eventually retired from. So I started in Boston, ended in Boston, but had a suburban tour, you know, through Hanover, Whitman, Hanson, and Randolph. And I'm not sure if you can consider Randolph suburban now, you know, it's more urban-like. So we have been doing strategic plan for a number of years, and we'll talk about that. The process really is a three-phase process in strategic planning. We have phase one, two, and three. And we'll talk a bit more about that, you know. But in phase one, you build the foundation for the plan. The better the work that you do at phase one, it's a matter of collecting data and ex post facto data and surveying people and talking people, and we'll talk more about that. The second phase is building the plan. So you take the information that you accumulate in phase one to inform phase two. And phase three is really the implementation of the plan, where the work of the school committee will dictate some of the things, the priorities that are in the strategic plan. So in phase one, typically what we do is assess the needs, working with district leaders about the needs within the district. So each plan and each process is really dedicated to the individual community that we're working on. From there, what we have is that there are timelines that we'll establish, talking about forums, and we'll make that determination with district administration around who do we talk in forums. We would conduct a survey, so if you don't have an opportunity to come face-to-face with us, then you would have an opportunity to do a survey. And we encourage not participation just with people that are within the school district, but we want all of the citizens, you know. So there are seniors that are, we work with senior centers, or actually you'll work with senior centers to disperse the survey. Former graduates, right, that might have some really insight in informing the process, you know. So anybody and everybody, what we try to do is bring everyone in. So phase one is a really broad approach, to gather data, to talk to a lot of different people, really get a feel what the strengths, challenges, and opportunities are, you know, for Pembroke over the course of the next three to five years. In phase two, it becomes more internal. So you work with a group, which we call the Strategic Planning Committee, if that makes sense. And it really depends upon the district of how many members are on that board, so, or how many members are in that committee. Typically, we have between 20 to 30, and that's an effective group. We've had as much as 55 members, and that slows down the process a little bit. And we've had as few as, you know, 15. But what happens when you have people that can't make that meeting, it really does impede the progress. So between 20 and 30, with representatives that are selected by the district and who really represent the community, one of the things you want is to make sure you include everybody's voice as part of this particular process. So we go through five meetings in which the Strategic Planning Committee meet, typically five meetings, depending on the progress and how quickly we work, and a data meeting, so six in total. They typically run about three hours. The data meeting's a little bit shorter, but someone that is part of the committee is really dedicating close to 20 hours of, you know, volunteer service to get the plan done. But we take a look at mission, vision, core values. So if you're doing work at the high school level or the rural district around Portrait of a Graduate, we would incorporate some of that work to make sure that we respect the work that's being done, you know. So we'll take a look at all of those things, you know, as it may be, I know without a strategic plan, each of your schools may have a separate mission, right? The hope is, is to have a single mission for the district, and everyone would work off that. We'll talk a little bit more about that. So essentially, once we get data, the school, the strategic plan should really be based on data. We want to hear voices, and sometimes there are outlier voices that we'll hear that are important, but all of the initiatives and objectives will be based on data that we're able to interpret, right? So it's not how I feel where Pembroke should head. It really has to be founded in the data. And we ask the committee members to do that, right? And we ask committee members that they just not only represent their own interests, but they represent that empty seat for those people that can't be part of this process or are not part of the Strategic Plan Committee. So in essence, what you have is that if you really do a good strategic plan, it should be a guiding document, right? That that guiding document is used by the school committee to identify priorities. And if you can identify your priorities, then that should inform the school committee process. You know, your budget should be dedicated towards the priorities that you've identified. And if there are activities or programs that may be going on within the district that are not identified as priorities, then you have to sometimes make those difficult decisions of continuing them, you know, or make them a priority, right? But all the priorities will be really based on the data and the information we're able to gather. Once the school committee, and the school committee obviously after the work of the Strategic Planning Committee, has to approve the plan. Once that plan is approved, and we hope that there's input from the school committees, with members as part of that, and constantly be informed, because it's such a comprehensive plan, that we prefer it not to come to the school committee and have it altered at that point, because there'll be 30 people that have been working, have dedicated 20 hours to creating this plan. So we want to make sure that everyone's voice is heard in the development of that plan, including obviously the school committee. The school committee, once the priorities have been identified in the strategic plan, should use those priorities to help inform the direction of the superintendent, right? That you would use that plan to help develop the annual goals that you have for the superintendent. Superintendent would then work with the building base leaders to make sure that, you know, she is fulfilling her goals and they're fulfilling the goals that have been set by the superintendent in accordance to the strategic plan. It makes it a lot easier for building base administrators, because having been one at all the different levels, that when it comes time in October, when I have to determine what the goals are for my teachers, that I can have a focus as to what the, where the district is heading in that direction, and all of the teachers essentially will have a goal that will support the strategic plan. You know, ultimately, what you're looking for is to improve your academic performance. As an academic institution, that's what you want to do first, right? Obviously, the culture and the climate issues, and, you know, when we talk about social, emotional components, those are all built into the plan. And so what you hope to do is have that as your guiding document. Because I can tell you, I've always worked, you know, sometimes you work on documents and you present it to the school committee, and I put it in my filing cabinet for 11 months, you know, blow off the dust, you know, on the 11th month, and change a couple of dates and bring it back. That's not a guiding document.
Don't give away the secret, Adam.
So the document really should help you make decisions. I know that at this point, there are opportunities where you get an influx of money, right? But we had that opportunity just back a couple of years ago. You should refer back to the plan that what you have identified as priorities, right? And fund those priorities, not sit around saying, so how should we spend this, you know, $200,000 that we have? You should go right back to the plan and take a look at the priorities that have been established and fund those priorities. Now, the nice thing about the strategic plan is that once it's done, it's not static, you know, because things change. Can you imagine had we done a plan in 2019 and COVID hit and you're, no, 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 this is our strategic plan, we're going to stick with it, right? That it really has to be flexible in the fact, so at the end of the year, you may take a look at what priorities are and reshuffle those priorities, right? So it's a dynamic process, and it's not a static process. So you're constantly coming back and revisiting what you have identified as priorities, you know, as part of your strategic plan. So typically, what happens is there are three phases, as I've said, that the first phase will take a couple of months. You know, we typically conduct forums, and forums may be done with parents, may be done with students, would be done with school committee, may be done with your town officials that are involved, you know. So that's part of the determination, done with staff, you know, anyone that's affiliated that really should have a voice as part of the process. We try to have them attend forums and so we can hear what some of their concerns are. And I can tell you, the phase one, as running phase one, it really informs as a facilitator how phase two really should go, you know. So that's really phase one, it's typically two months. I gave you just a possible timeline if you were to start this, and in some cases, it can be extended. For example, we did Norwells last year, and they wanted to extend it throughout the year because they were, they're making a shift in their superintendent, and they didn't want to have this current superintendent implement the plan for the new superintendent. So, you know, it's flexible in all honesty. What we try to do is match it to the district. Phase two is where I said we come more internally, where the committee is identified, and people that are on the committee have to make a commitment to attend all of the meetings, you know. So what we try to do is establish a standard time, you know, it could be a Wednesday, for example, whatever day that, you know, the school committee or there are conflicts. We try to establish that time and have it consistent throughout the five meetings. And that makes it easier for parents that may be on board or staff on board, that people have daycare concerns, that they can say, okay, Wednesday from four to seven is the day that I do this work. That five meetings, between the first and the second meeting is when the data meeting happens. And between typically the fourth and the fifth meeting is when you're really developing the plan. So once the plan is completed, you'll see the content of the plan, not the finished product. It won't be a presentation plan at that time, because it has to be approved by the school committee. There's no sense in going and having our graphic designer, you know, create this beautiful plan, and then when it comes to the school committee, there are some changes that may be made. So we wait for final approval from the school committee prior to sending that plan out for a presentation plan. And typically, you know, it would start at the beginning of the next school year, we would craft it. But again, this helps to inform, you know, what happens. If you have a plan in place and you know what your priorities are, that when school improvements plans come from schools, they should identify the priorities, or they should support the priorities that have been identified in the strategic plan. Your Portrait of a Graduate, you know, if you're identifying core values that are essential to students, you know, or essential in this district, your Portrait of a Graduate should really be based on many of those core values as well. Not that it's, those are the only core values, but what you try to do is have a larger umbrella, which would be the strategic plan, and then everything else falls underneath that. So when we collect data from the forums, we ask strengths. What do you really do well? If I was a new parent moving into Pembroke, what would you say are those things that are so impressive, that these are the things you brag about with your neighbors and neighboring towns? We ask for challenges, areas of improvement, perhaps a program that might be in place that could do better, or needs to have some attention to do better, and the opportunities of, over the course of the next three to five years, what should Pembroke do? You know, what are the opportunities here? So these are the questions that we seek in the forums, and in essence, when we send out the surveys, in the constituents, to find out some of their opinions. And some of their opinions will be based on and be supported by the data. And as we all know, sometimes you get those outlier voices that have, are always outlier voices, but nevertheless, really important voices to hear. The, so we'd look at student achievement, teaching, learning, and leading, you know, the resources that affect the district, partnerships that you may have that are important partnerships, and any other areas. But we try to help people focus a little bit on the, helping us answer those particular questions. Questions about the process?
Let me start, Katrina, on the far end.
Yeah, sure. I did have a question. I know you're talking about the data being in the form of surveys as well as forums. Do you also look at, you know, achievement data that's out there?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So when we talk about ex post facto data, we'll take a look at all those things that you could search on the internet, right? That's all put in the data, and then we have the Strategic Plan Committee take a look at all of that data to help them inform the process. So we ask, we work with the district, say, hey, just load any and all data, and then we, as TLA, we take a look at it and we start to sort it. The more data, the better, right? We prefer that you just dump all the data that you have, how you measure success within this district, and that's different in varying districts, right? How you measure it, obviously, we would take a look at the standardized tests, you know, we'd take a look at MCAS, we might, you know, SATs, you know, any of those things that inform success of students, we would look at. And that would help it to inform like the student achievement component of that. But there might be pieces around social, emotional learning pieces that may be new or need to be addressed here in the district. So all of that information is taken, and we'll work with the Strategic Planning Committee to help them analyze that. And so what will happen is that we'll identify areas, what we call focus areas, right? From those focus areas, we'll help define what the objectives, the strategic objectives are. And underneath those objectives is how do you meet that objective? Well, through initiatives. These are initiatives. And it's not a single initiative. You may have an initiative that may have five or six or seven different ways of doing that, you know. For example, if you're trying to build a new school, for example, you know, that's just not one initiative. There's a number of items that you have to do under that to bring that to fruition. So, and then what happens with that particular plan, it's given back to the district, and your district leadership starts to take a look at action steps around that piece. Those are typically incorporated as part of the plan, that's developed internally by the leadership.
Got it. Awesome. Thank you so much. That's helpful. Do you all work with the, I think it's called the E2C Data Hub? I know that they, Educator to Career Pathways, that's based, partnered with DESI and some other organizations to look at data.
We don't. You know, typically what we do is we rely on the district to just input all of that data. So we don't have external data in which we evaluate Pembroke on, you know. It's really up to the team that we're working with to make sure, and we also monitor that process, right? If we see that there's not enough data, then we'll provide some guidance in that particular area. But all of the things that you've done in the past around school improvement plans and any other data that you use, metrics that you've used to measure success here in the district, we look at.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Of course.
Allison?
So for the committee, I'm guessing like we put or ask like each PTO to potentially put people on boosters, like how do you pick like?
Yeah, I mean, so I would think there's, you know, a handful of building base staff, district-wide staff, administrators, parents, students at the secondary level, absolutely, members of the community. I think the way I'm kind of thinking about it in the conversations that I've had, both with Pam and Ed beforehand, is the survey is the first step, so as we start to think about the questions for that survey, and I know that Gary had sent me a sample of one, too, you know, as part of our conversation at this committee level about approving that survey, we'd talk about the makeup of the committee and then go out and find the people. Twenty is a big number. It's hard to, it's really hard to schedule when you get to committees that are that size. So, you know, we don't want to miss somebody's voice, but I think we want to be cognizant of the fact that there's a ton of work that needs to happen, and sometimes if the group is a little bit on the smaller end, the work moves a little bit better. But, you know, once we've identified who we think the people are, we can get some feedback from you guys if we've missed a group, right?
Absolutely. We'll help you form that committee. I mean, and I think it's great that you include students. I will tell you, of all the strategic plans we've done, the students' voice is the most powerful voice on that committee.
Yeah.
And then how, like for data-wise, how far back do you go?
What, typically, three years is what we look at, and I think that if you go much further back, it doesn't always inform the process. If there have been significant differences, we would take a look at that. And so it's customized really to each individual district. If you thought that we should go back five years, or if the leadership thought that we should go back five years, then we would look at that. It's hard reading data. I will tell you that, you know, you have to lead that process, so if you're a layperson and you haven't really looked at educational data, I could be five years of educational data and ask you in two hours to kind of decipher that. It's really quite a task, right? So we try to narrow it down, and what we do at TLA is that we will help facilitate in that, in that area, and I look at the data. So if I'm facilitating a group, I try to go through the data and start to see some trends and patterns that may be emerging. And if a committee is having difficulty in seeing those things, I may introduce some of those things and say, hey, here's where we found that data. We saw this coming out of the surveys, which were supported by the forums, but hit the academic data that the MCAS is telling us, right? So there's that, the data that already exists, ex post facto data, you know, we want to take a look at all of those things.
And then we also are coming up to a town meeting in the fall that we're going to be discussing if we're going to, the town supports joining South Shore VOTAC. So how can that affect, because I feel like that could change the strategic plan, whether that passes or doesn't pass? Have you guys had something like this happen while in the middle of a strategic plan? Because, you know, I'm looking at it if Pembroke High School has 60 or 80 less students as part of, I don't know, it's kind of one of those...
Right. I think that what you want to do is determine, you know, the outcomes that you want for the district, right? And the better your outcomes, the less tendency for students to want to vacate the district. So we have done that with, where some districts, they know that there are budgetary challenges that they'll be facing in the next year. It should inform the process, because your priorities are still your priorities, right? And then you think about how you fund them. It actually is more helpful in the sense that you've identified priorities, and then you can say, if you have to make a difficult decision, does it match what you have identified as a priority, right? And those aren't easy decisions. It's always easy to add, right? It's always difficult to track from those things. And I think if you have a good, sound, strong document that you use as a guiding document, it should assist you in that. But they're just decisions that sometimes are very difficult, you know, to make.
Okay. I think those are all my questions for now, please.
So one question I had is, like, how do you typically involve, like, so we've decided, we've picked a liaison from this... Like, so we've decided, we've picked a liaison from the school committee to be part of the committee already. But I heard you mention that you want to involve the school committee as much as possible before he, like, do you typically just have one person from the committee, or is it?
It depends on the size of the committee, you know what I mean? Obviously, you just, you just can have a quorum that attends the Strategic Planning Committee. And what we hope is that liaison comes back and keeps the committee informed, right? So, after, after the first meeting, come back and talk about some of those things and even bring back, you know, concerns of the school committee. Because ultimately, what we want to do is work collaboratively together, you know, that you don't feel like, okay, we've been left out of this process, now we get this document that we have to review and approve.
Right. Would you do a forum with the five of them though?
A forum? Absolutely. Absolutely. So, we would listen as part of the forum with you. And, and are there municipal people? I mean, there, there are a whole host of things, and I can tell you, in some communities, the political environment can be very different, even in regionals. Sometimes the two towns don't want to get together. So, we always fill that up. You're lucky enough not to have to deal with the regional.
Yeah.
I know you weren't swerved, but.
And so the, so when you're doing the data collection, so you're, you're doing a mix of forums and?
Forums, surveys, looking, ex post facto data, you know, just trying to get a really a, a strong picture or a broad picture of what's going on within the district. Because you take that data and once you analyze that data, it's going to identify what your strengths and some of your challenges are. And so, your priorities are going to be to address those, right? So, it's important that we look, the more data we have, the better the plan, right? So, when it's limited data, it may not be giving you the full picture of what's going on within the district. So, we, we encourage that. We monitor that particular process, you know, we set up dates in which we expect the leadership to, to dump all of their information in, and then we start looking through that information. And if there's not enough, we may have suggestions where else they could find, you know, data.
All right.
Katrina?
And you will help interpret the data, is that correct, for the committee?
Yes, you know, and, and working with your district leaders as well, they're, you know, they're good at interpreting data. So, what we try to do is co-facilitate with them during this particular process. So, yes, we, we do. It, it really is difficult. The first time I provide you with pages and pages of data from all various sources, you're not, even educators have a tough time doing that, so.
Well, that's what I was thinking when you mentioned the parents and the students, like just the margin of error.
Right. Well, they'll be good and we strategically kind of create groups that, that we want to make sure that everyone participates in that. And you, you'd be amazed at how good students are, you know? And when, when you come to like a crossroad where we can't agree, let's talk to really the, the end user. And students have some great perspectives on that. So, I, I really encourage that, that, one, we do forums for students too, so, you know, I've, I've been in a number of high schools where I just meet with a group of students and they have a lot to say about some of the things that are challenging, you know? And that helps to inform me as a facilitator, you know, to make sure that those issues are addressed.
Definitely.
Ladies and gentlemen, outside of the table, you guys all good? Well, on behalf of the committee, I think we're very excited. I think we're going to go down a road that we probably haven't done before, that I've been involved in, and I've been here nine years.
I, I think I did see that you hadn't had a strategic plan.
No, I've been here for 15.
Right, so.
Okay, so I don't feel as bad then. So, I, I think we're pretty excited and our next step would be?
So, the next step for you guys is we're going to bring you a draft of the survey, probably in your first meeting, first September meeting, because we have to get approval of that to get it out. So, we want to push that out towards the middle end of September, in that October timeline that you kind of outlined for the forums to begin. So, the next thing you'll see related to this is a draft of a survey.
And usually, we have a student representative who sits where you sit, but of course, they graduated. They won't be there for the September meeting, but they vote on it and they will eventually have a, we like to say, a seat at the table. And I found it to be very informative.
Absolutely, absolutely. They are the end user, right? You know, and that's, that's really what the strategic plan should do. It should, should not only academic forms, but, but the experience here in Pembroke, right? You want them to have this, this wonderful, you know, lifelong experience here in Pembroke. And I think that students really contribute quite a bit to that.
Definitely. Well, thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you.
I don't know if you want to stay for the rest of our exciting meeting, and you've got a good seat right up front.
I would, but I have to.
We know, we know.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Very nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you as well.
Thanks.
All right. That does sound exciting. Moving on, the superintendent's report. Erin?
Sure. The first thing in my report is the fiscal year '25 close. So, in your materials that I sent on Friday, as well as your paper packet, you have a copy of the fiscal year '25 close memo. There was a series of spreadsheets also sent electronically. There's just the, the 2025 total budget is in your paper packet. But our fiscal year '25 budget was $38,580,000. As of June 30th, we had spent $34,308,846.21. So, that left a balance of a little over $4.2 million. You can see the breakout of that balance below, so 2.4 million of it is the summer payrolls. So, any of the payrolls that take place after the June 30th date, there are three of them. We have open purchase orders in the amount of $1.8 million that would be moving forward into fiscal year '25. So, a lot of that is the pre-buy for the special education tuitions that we've talked about, as well as we were able to do a lot of the hardware purchases that Mike Tinker and the tech department had identified during their budget presentations as needs for the upcoming year. That and some of the curriculum materials, anything that's a tangible textbook or instructional material, we were able to order most of that. That left us with a balance of $44,067.58. Five years ago, we would have returned that to the town, but we are fortunate now to have a sped stabilization fund that we can transfer those funds into. So, the recommendation would be to move the balance left in fiscal year '25 into the sped stabilization fund. The bottom portion of the memo talks about purchase orders from last, the year before last, so the '23, '24 school year. Anything that we encumbered and rolled into the next fiscal year, like the tuitions that I was talking about or some tech purchases, anything that is unspent as of June 30th automatically goes back to the town in the form of free cash from purchase orders that are two years old at, at that point. So, there's $36,589.10 that goes back to the town. Your electronic package shows you the breakout of what those dollars are. There's a couple of plumbing purchase orders that came in a little bit less. There was two or three tuitions where maybe a student had changed placement or, or required less services than we had originally encumbered the funds for. And there's a couple of materials, notably the AP Statistics books that we ordered last year came in less expensive, which is great, than we had, than the original quote was. So, the process that you do tonight is vote to bring those encumbrances into the, the next fiscal year. So, you'd be voting to carry over encumbrances in the amount of $4,271,153.79 into fiscal year '26.
So moved.
Second.
That makes it easy.
No point in repeating it.
This is just a regular vote, correct?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Anyone abstaining? Natalie, it's unanimous.
If you happen to be diving into the line-by-line detail and you have questions, please feel free to reach out to me. I'm happy to answer them. The next thing in my report is some surplus materials for North Pembroke Elementary School. As part of the summer cleaning and waxing and resetting of classrooms, the staff here has identified some materials that are no longer in good working order. So, we have a couple of pieces of furniture, a printer, or a fax machine that are almost as old as us, and some clocks that are not working, that Mr. Murphy is requesting that you all deem them surplus. Reminding you that when you deem something surplus, it means that we dispose of it in the best means necessary. So, recycling, selling, that kind of stuff, we, we go through every option before we throw it away.
Fantastic. Could I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay, we've got a first, we've got a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Anyone abstaining? Natalie, it's unanimous. Okay, superintendent updates.
So, under the subcommittee updates, we have had a couple of meetings in the past few weeks since we last met. Our negotiation subcommittee meeting did meet just last Thursday, the 31st. We are meeting again this Thursday, as well as next Thursday. So, in our last meeting, we really focused on the Unit AB, so the teacher and nurse contract, Article 8 working conditions. We talked a lot about kind of the makeup of the workday, the makeup of the work year, some of the interests that the school committee had, some of the interests that the teachers' union had. We are not quite at agreement yet, but I think we had a really good meeting last week. You know, we kind of closed the meeting in preparation for this week in saying, there's still a lot of proposals on the table. We are all very optimistic that we are going to get to a place of agreement, probably not by the first day of school, but in the fall. But in order for that to happen, we asked that everybody that's involved kind of take a look at what we have left out there and make sure that, that what's still on the table is really still important, because there has been some, a significant amount of time since we started talking in January. So, a lot of things have changed in the district over that time, and, you know, maybe something that was a hot-button issue in January has already been resolved and we can kind of pull that off the table. So, when we meet this Thursday, we will reconvene in discussing Article 8 working conditions, as well as kind of taking a list of what's out there and seeing if there's anything that we can, we can move off. As I said before, when we instituted the hiring freeze for the positions that we discussed here, as well as the elimination of some of the positions, namely the librarian at the high school, the clerical paras, the library para at the elementary level, we did that as an opportunity then to, to kind of buy us a little bit of room to continue conversations that had a fiscal impact on them. It makes the most sense to be restoring if we're going to restore before school starts. So, I'm optimistic that between this Thursday and next Thursday, we'll, we'll have some movement. But I will come back to you for your meeting on the 19th and give you an update about that hiring freeze and whether or not there's anything we can unfreeze, because we would obviously like to get staff back in place before the first day of school if we can, so.
Absolutely. Did I miss anything?
No, sounds good. That was what I remember.
Just last night, the education subcommittee meeting met, or subcommittee met, to discuss the program of studies. So, in your packet, I shared with you the difference that we discussed last evening. So, the program of studies, when it was approved in February, our course listings listed AP Physics C Mechanics as our offering at Pembroke High School. We do not have a teacher that is certified or trained to teach AP Physics C. We do have a teacher that is trained to teach AP Physics I. So, in your packet, you have the difference between those two courses. And Mary Beth has worked really closely with Jonathan Shapiro, our content supervisor for STEM, to, to put this together. I think it was surprising last night when we looked at it, there is not a huge difference between AP Physics I and AP Physics C as far as the content that's covered, except there's an additional unit in AP Physics I. AP Physics I is algebra-based math. AP Physics C is calculus-based math. So, that is kind of the, the main difference between those two courses. Jonathan went as so far to tell you each of the units in the courses and show you exactly the overview of those units and highlight in your packet just kind of some of the places where AP Physics I is a little bit different than AP Physics C under the same unit topic. We currently have 13 students enrolled in AP Physics C. So, the reason why I'm asking tonight about updating the program of studies is we'd like to reach out to those 13 students and their families to let them know that AP Physics C is not being offered, but we have AP Physics I, and kind of talk them through what the changes are. I would be surprised if any of them said, forget it, I don't want to take it. But I, you know, we want to be able to have those conversations with students ahead of the start of school, so.
Is there any opportunity still to hire if you are like doing, if the hiring freeze stops?
Yeah, so we had already posted the physics position before we put the hiring freeze in place. So, there was a good 19 days or so, I think it was posted, and there was no applicant that had the AP training in that physics pool when it was posted. So, I don't know that if we were to lift the hiring freeze on August 19th or 20th, that all of a sudden, there'd be somebody in the pool that has AP Physics C certification or training, since it was posted at the time where most positions in education are posted and there was no applicant in the pool.
Yeah. Would you like, I'm just throwing it out there, like, are you going to like completely just give up? Or you're going to like post it anyways, just in case?
No, no, no. So, I probably wouldn't post physics again for this year. But moving forward, the teacher that is teaching AP Physics I could potentially take the training for AP Physics C. There just isn't physically enough time for him to take it this summer to offer the course for next year. So, the recommendation isn't to remove AP Physics C from the course catalog. It's just to add AP Physics I, understanding that for school year '25, '26, we'd be offering AP Physics I. But like other courses that don't run every single year, Physics C would stay in the program of studies and when we can offer it, we would offer it.
Sure. And I, obviously, I think AP Physics I is the good choice. I'm just wondering for the families that are really hoping for their child to go to MIT or, you know, had some, you know, wanted to go to a different school, you know, clearly.
Yeah, so that's why we want to have the conversations with those families and see what, were you taking AP Physics because it was Physics C Mechanics, or were you taking it as an AP offering? If you're going to MIT, the odds are you're going to have to take physics there as well, that they're not going to take the credit from an AP exam. But not knowing each individual student's plan for taking the course, you know, it's hard to make that, that determination. We did talk a little bit last night, if there was somebody, as you, you're describing, Sue, that was only taking it because it was mechanics, could we potentially find another way for them to get that? We would exhaust all options to do that, just like we do with some of our math students.
Yeah, okay. And we also discussed how these schools may not be accurate, because if you go to the actual school's website, it says it's different information, so that's just the overview of it.
Right. I think Jonathan was thinking that one of the questions would be, do some, do schools not take AP Physics I as, as a credit as opposed to AP Physics C? So, he did do some research there, and even in his own research, found that what was posted on the, the college board website wasn't the same as what's posted on the individual school websites. He did not go through every college and university in the United States to confirm, but just wanted to share and did share last night that his experience was, you know, one of the, Bridgewater State says they only take AP Physics I, but their website says they take both. So, you know, just if a family were to click on the college board and say, oh, wait, this change means X, Y, or Z, we want to folks to know that we did look at it and that is not accurate.
Right, right, right. Yeah, I was just thinking, only because I have two sons that are physicists. So, I'm like trying to like make sure that there's a path for the physicists.
Yeah, and I think when we talk about our AP offerings at Pembroke High School, we've always had an open enrollment policy. We're always looking for opportunities for students for exposure for those courses. We, we've talked extensively about just taking an AP class in high school. Whether you get a one, two, three, four, or five on the exam, you are so far better prepared to sit in a college course the next year. I do think over time, AP Physics I will be a more popular option for students to take, because sometimes that calculus math is a limiting factor for students. So, by offering AP Physics I, you don't necessarily have to wait till you're concurrently enrolled in calculus, like our current offering is you can take it, potentially your junior year as opposed to senior year when you're taking calculus. So, it may, the number of students interested in AP Physics may go up, which would be great.
That, that would be great, absolutely. I, you know, I just think like offering AP Physics C is a really nice, I mean, it does offer.
Yeah, I think Mary Beth did some research about surrounding communities.
Yeah. The towns that we sort of look at in terms of Patriot League, not necessarily our Dart schools, but Norwell and Hingham offer AP Physics C, and Silver Lake and Duckberry offer, offer AP Physics I. So, it's kind of, those are the schools that we, we look at when we're looking at our surrounding towns and how our students would compete with them. So, it's about a 50/50 split there.
Sure, yeah. No, I understand that.
But ideally, we'll get to a place where we can offer both, right? We have somebody that's able to do both.
Yeah.
Have we ever taught this course? Have we ever had AP Physics I?
No.
How many, how long have we had AP Physics C?
Probably about 20 years since I started. Norm Mitchell was the first teacher of AP Physics here, and I, I don't know that he taught it right away, but eventually he picked that up. I'm not sure if it was in the first year.
It's basically meant here as long as Pembroke High School. So, Erin kind of alluded to this. Is there potential for virtual opportunities for these kids? Because I know, I believe there's some kids who want the calculus.
Who want the Physics C. So, we're going to look at that and see what we can find. As you know, it's very difficult to find asynchronous online courses for some of these more advanced disciplines, but we are definitely going to look at it and see if that's something that would be appealing to students. Oftentimes, I feel like of all of the disciplines, science is not the best one that you learn online.
Right, it's a lab-based course, right?
Yeah. This is a lab-based course, and those lab skills are also very important to the students and to, obviously, to the schools that they're applying to. So, we will, that's why we want to get started. As soon as we have some approval that the program of studies is amended, we can start reaching out to families.
Is there an opportunity based on this being in algebra-based physics? That they could skip physics, honors physics, and go right into AP Physics I?
I'm not exactly sure. I would have to check on that.
We, that's something we could look at for the following year.
Yeah, I'd have to, I'd have to look at that.
I'm just wondering like if there's a prerequisite, if there's kids, maybe juniors or something that would want it.
What was the question? I'm sorry.
I know the fan heart.
Sorry.
If there's a prerequisite, like if kids could go right into AP Physics I.
So, right now, the, the prerequisite for AP Physics C is that you have taken and achieved a B or better in honors physics and concurrently enrolled in calculus.
I don't think so, Allison. I actually think you have to take an introductory physics course. I actually think you have to take an introductory physics course at the high school level first. When I think about the tracks in science, you take bio, and then you take AP bio. You take chem, then you take AP chem. So I'm not saying no, but I don't think so.
Yeah, because I know, I think it's situat, maybe the kids sophomore year take AP chem instead of chem.
Yeah, it's the same in Hingham.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering if it's the same, like if it can be, because I mean, there's always going to be kids that might be ready for it.
Yes, and I think we try to address those needs when they come to us on a case-by-case basis, but that's not traditionally the way.
So how is the wording going to be for...
It would be the description from the College Board about that description that is currently in the Program of Studies reflects the College Board description. The description that we would add to the Program of Studies for AP Physics I would reflect the description from the College Board, which talks about it being an algebra-based course and an introductory college-level physics class.
Okay. Because I would be curious to know if we could open it up potentially to kids who hadn't taken it.
So I wouldn't open it up for kids for this fall just because the high school master schedule is pretty sad right now.
Yeah, but I just think there's going to be kids not wanting, like they're going to, they're going to go find Physics C somewhere else. And then there might be, you know, like, do you run a class with five kids? You know, like, I don't know. I don't know if there's going to be a shift.
We don't know either until we make the shift and we start talking to them.
Well, that's why it's hard for me to make like, know what exactly, I mean, I, it's clear we need to have this class.
I think of it this way, we would like to offer AP Physics for students.
Right now, we can't offer anything. We can't get the other option, no class.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think the right answer is to add this, for sure. I just want to make sure that we're still allowing students.
It's going to continue to be a challenge. There are, you know, there are not a lot of physicists out there that are choosing education.
Yeah, there might be kids who didn't choose it because, yeah, didn't choose it because they didn't qualify because of calc and now they would want to take it.
We wouldn't be opening it up to that group of students for this fall. Because the schedules are set. We're only looking at the 13 students that had selected AP Physics C as a course, and we're going to talk to them.
Have we done that before?
We haven't made a change like this in August in forever.
Well, I mean, obviously, we need to do this because we have to have physics.
We have physics, we're not going to AP physics.
AP, AP physics, yeah, exactly. But I mean, I, we have to have an offering, but at the same time, it would be really nice if, A, we found an alternate for those who are calculus-based students who like the more difficult math and...
Right, the kids that are going on to be STEM majors.
STEM major, exactly. I think that's, it's really important. I really think that it's one of the things that differentiates Pembroke is that we offer some, you know, something with this much rigor, so...
And I can come back at the meeting on the 19th and let you know how the conversations with those families are the 19th or the...
Is this a first read or is this an approval?
This is an approval so that we can start having those conversations.
So I thought I misunderstood, so he wasn't taking the AP, he was only doing the AP Physics I certification?
He's taking the AP Physics I training this summer. So he can't, he doesn't have time to physically take both.
Okay.
He's taught physics here before, he just hasn't taught AP physics here before.
Okay. And so what was the conversation around, I'm just kind of, we can talk about that after.
Yeah, I think we're kind of beating up, I think we're beating a topic to death here, folks.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, so let's get a motion to consideration for approval.
So moved.
I got a motion, so we have a second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstaining? Natalie, it's unanimous, 5-0. Thank you, ladies.
So the Vocational Planning Committee met today. If I missed something, Sue, please feel free to jump in. We have been talking with Tom Hickey at South Shore Tech, mostly individually. I know Sue's talked to him, I've talked to him, Melissa Lee, the parent rep has talked to him, a couple other people have talked to him, but we haven't come together as a group to share those conversations in a bit. I know that the Vocational Planning Committee met a couple of weeks ago, but it was a very small group of us, and we just kind of talked about outreach that can happen outside of some of the bigger pieces. And I shared that as a last update that the friends for VOTech, I'm not sure what their Facebook name is, that they're going to be doing some signs. We are going to be offering some opportunities for folks to ask questions and, you know, here are our presentation. That first opportunity is next Tuesday at 5:30 in Room 102 at the Community Center. So I'll share that same presentation that I shared with you guys in the spring and then open it up for people to ask questions. We've already started to generate an FAQ document to post to the website. So following tonight's meeting, our communication specialist will kind of push out an email blast about that meeting next Tuesday and a link to our website. So there'll be a vocational tab on the website that has both the presentation and we'll continually update the FAQ and any additional documents that seem like they would be helpful for people that are interested in the process. We do have some work that needs to be done on a draft regional agreement. I will be meeting with Tom over the next week or so to take a look at some of that and then bring it back to that Regional Planning Committee eventually. It will come to you guys probably the beginning of September would be my guess if I was guessing at a timeline. That work needs to happen ahead of town meeting because that is the document that the folks are voting on at town meeting, so.
So speaking of like the town meeting, the warrant opens next week, so we'll leave you...
You don't have to do anything. So we've already put a placeholder on the warrant for that. You have to do nothing. We just have to have the actual words done before the book goes to print.
Yep, that's just what I wanted to confirm, that we don't have to do anything additional to get on the warrant.
No.
I think it's important to note for people at home that want to listen, the Pembroke Chamber of Commerce did a podcast, so you can go to the Pembroke Chamber of Commerce site, Facebook page, and I think the website as well. There's a link to a podcast that we do, I'm a member of the chamber as well, through Local Scene. And so it was myself, Melissa Houli, and Tom Hickey, and Peter Brown, and we talked about all things VOTech. And, you know, I sort of went over Erin's presentation from back in March and, you know, went through the details. So if anyone wants to listen and get some more details on that ahead of the forum, that would be great. And then come to the forum with your questions, so.
And if you can't make it, you can email your questions either directly to me or to that same scinfo@pembrokek12.org that David mentioned. I'm happy to get back to folks. I know that not everybody's free at 5:30 on a Tuesday, so there'll be other opportunities. We are looking to schedule one with the Council on Aging during the day the following week. So as those opportunities start to kind of solidify, we'll push out information for folks as well. We'll do more after probably the first or second week of school. When it calms down a little bit for parents, we'll do a couple more offerings in September and October for people to ask questions.
Can those go out in the, like, printable emails?
Yep, we'll send out reminders, yep.
And Sue, you'll be our representative there, correct?
Yes.
You can't go, of course.
You can all go, it's a public meeting. You can all come to the meeting, you just can't talk to each other about vocational.
Yeah.
Quick question, has Budget Sub had a chance to meet?
Budget Sub hasn't met formally.
Yeah, we should start that because there's obviously a big financial piece too, this VOTech, that has a lot of working parts, so.
Yep, Budget Sub should absolutely meet soon.
Okay. Can we try to get a date? Does the school start?
So we're doing some preliminary work first before Budget Sub meets, which is happening. Tracy and I are going to meet before that to do some preliminary work and then bring it back to the Budget Sub so we can talk about it.
Okay.
Just to be clear, Tracy Moreno?
Yes.
Yeah, a lot of people listening.
Sorry, yeah, the select board chair.
And she's on the regional?
She, she is the...
Liaison?
She's the liaison for budget for Select Board. So we're just going to meet and then we'll have more productive...
I think I'd like that to be meeting, I'd like to attend that, though, I think.
That's not a public meeting, it's just like an informal, we'll talk about it later, but that's, you know.
Okay.
All right. Anything else? Are you looking at future meeting dates and topics?
So we're meeting on the 19th. The principals will be here to give you kind of an update on all things that are exciting about education. We will give you, there's been a whole lot of projects that have happened over the summer that have either started or are getting started. I know there's some questions about the Hobmok Playground, we've done some of the flooring projects, the PA system, so we'll give an update kind of on all of those things that have been happening over the course of the summer as well.
Yeah, that's what I asked for, I'd like to have a facilities update of all the things that we've been talking about for the last year.
Yeah, on that note, just thank you to all the facility staff. I know they've been working hard all summer to get the buildings ready. Are there any other important things you want me to get on that meeting? I think we, last night, picked an EdSub date that happens before then, so there could be another update from EdSub at that meeting.
Yeah, potentially, we, I don't know if Policy needs to meet prior to that, but we should probably get another meeting on the books soon.
Yep.
All right, so we've got the 19th for our next meeting.
6:00 PM?
After that...
Are we back to 6:00, are we still on the regular?
Yes.
So September 2nd would be the first Tuesday, which is day after Labor Day.
Do you want to meet that day with school, or it's up to you guys?
I mean, school starts the week before, so it really doesn't matter to us.
I think we should stick with it because that's what I...
The 2nd and the 16th.
Yeah, and that's how I fill out my...
Yep, works for me.
So 2nd?
Yeah, 16th.
I thought it was going to be 6:00 as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Is 6:00 good for everybody, or is that...
It is, yeah, I like...
Yeah, the earlier.
Okay.
It's great.
Then it would be two weeks, and we, October 7th.
So we would probably on the 2nd want to talk about what October looks like because town meeting does fall in there too, so we'll talk about it.
When is town meeting, the 25th?
That's the election day, but there's...
Are we having a...
I don't, I don't follow, although there's a little...
Do you know when town meeting is?
No, it shouldn't be, nothing local.
It's the third Tuesday, so it's the 21st, right?
21st, I think, yeah.
Our meeting is the...
The town meeting is the third Tuesday in October.
So then we'll have to refigure.
So we would probably still meet, have like a meeting ahead of it that we normally do, but it wouldn't be a...
But it, so you might want to look at meeting the 14th that month because there's, you're meeting on the 23rd, and then there's a, like, October might be a little bit off.
So doing September 2nd, 16th, and then maybe 30th even?
Maybe.
And then 14th or something, okay.
Let's talk, yeah, let's put on the agenda.
Hold our Tuesdays for...
Yep, there might be an extra Tuesday in September.
Okay.
Allison, I may end up with a conflict on the 19th, I'm not sure yet, but I will let you know.
You could be the chair.
Wait, wait, September...
No, August 19th.
August 19th, the next school committee meeting.
Oh, this, okay, sorry.
Yeah, I'm not 100% sure, but...
That's fine, I'll over here.
Just want to make sure we have a quorum. All right.
Okay.
Okay, folks, we're going to enter into executive session pursuant to Chapter 30A, Section 21A3 to discuss strategy related to collective bargaining. An open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the legal position of the school committee as declared by the chair. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. By roll call, Katrina S.
Yes.
Okay, Sue.
Yes.
Allison.
Yep.
Katrina D.
Yes.
And me is yes. Ladies and gentlemen, we are now going into executive session. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Enjoy the rest of your summer.